Please thank the budget legal.
To the fight, the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with every legal justice for all.
Public comment period. Yes, sir.
I was wondering if the board could possibly explain to me the proper procedures that I need to take in order to have code enforcement, have the signs fixed on DeMar's Boulevard between PM with Dollar and the Dollar General. And one of the reasons why I'm really concerned about this was at the last town board meeting when Kurt Gagne was speaking, he says it could take another possibly, well, this whole process, whether it's five more years or if it's a total of five years to get this zoning taken care of. So I was wondering if it's going to take another five years or within those five years in order to get these signs fixed.
Peter?
As I explained a couple several times in the past, over and over, currently in our existing code, there's no language to have them fix the lighting inside.
Okay.
So I can't write them up under something, but I will do you a favor. I will contact them courteously again and ask them to fix the internal lighting. But once our new sign codes come into effect, then we have language in there to go after them like that. So.
Thank you.
But I agree with Jim. It does look terrible that one half of the signs are, or if not, turns to leave the sign off.
Yeah. And this was first, yeah, and this was first brought up on a board meeting in November of 2017.
Right.
This has been going on for a while now.
But you have to follow the law. So you can't just order them to do it.
Well, exactly. So but now I want to know, so now, that's what I want to know, and I want to know the procedures. So now does he need, does the village lawyer need to do something in order to have this taken care of?
No, you can't make a law or create something on somebody.
So there is just.
But we could send them a letter to out. We'll drop a letter to send them.
But they should.
If it's broken, if it's broken, is there a possibility?
Just the bulbs are burned out.
None of that's plastics broken?
Nope. The signs are complete, intact.
And this has been going on for a long time, but I really think that this is very unacceptable.
Yeah, that's why we, one of our major things was a clean overhaul of the signs.
We can't create laws, but I'm pushing this as an issue because if there isn't a laws, and like I said, and I brought this up, and we were supposed to have this taken care of in a year, but now it could be five years.
Well, we thought our zoning code would go faster, and it did go quite fast as well.
So it still is a concern because it hasn't been taken care of.
It's addressed in the proposed zoning code, but that's not going to be acting on for a while.
Exactly. But see, that's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about, well, so can't they take action on the code that's just like Kurt Gagne says, don't panic? This'll be a while. We already have something in place. So can we work on that spot for the meantime until the rest of the code comes through?
Modify the sign code?
Modify the sign code?
I don't think it would take quite a while, but.
Well, I think, because this other code might not even ever go through.
I know this other code will go through. It's not as contentious as everybody says. Only as far as I've ever heard, there's one spot that's contentious.
You will call Nathan Race, who's our attorney, and see, talk with him and see if there's something we can do, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
But I will do it courtesy of him.
Rita?
Hi, I'm Rita Quinn. I am here to add my voice to the chorus of people that object to the proposed naming of the baseball team as the Tupper Lake River Pigs. I read Rick Skiff's careful explanation of where that term came from. That was published in the Free Press today. And my reaction to that is, if it has to be explained so thoroughly to people who, in theory, know something about the logging industry, it's not a good name. We all know that, for example, the Tupper Lake Lumberjacks name is shortened just to the Jax. So I have visions of enterprise headlines saying, "Tupper Lake Pigs defeated in doubleheader," or something like that. It's just, we've worked so hard to improve our community with municipal funds, with donations, with donations of talent and time and materials. This seems to be a huge step backward. And I see that you have something on your agenda about addressing the name. I'm glad that you addressed it in a public meeting. I was never quite sure how all of this sort of boiled up.
We don't pick the name, just so you know. It's a league name.
I understand that. But I'm hoping that because the municipality is distributing, dispersing monies and personnel to modify the baseball field, that there will be some influence on the part of this board and the part of the community. I'm not a village resident. I know you all know that. But I live in Tupper Lake, and I don't want to be represented as a Tupper Lake Pig.
Okay.
Thanks.
We're going to be discussing that, but not until the next meeting when trustee LaScala is back. It's on the agenda for tonight. It's going to be laid aside. But we've had calls, I've had calls, every trustee's had calls on it. And we are going to be talking to Mr. Gonzalez to see if there's other names that tie somewhere to the community somehow and see what he says. So it's not a done deal yet, and we really don't pick the name, but we're going to talk to him. Because there's a lot of names that we suggested, such as the Wild Otter, the Otter trying to tie it in with the Wild Center. They're all taken up by major league teams, the Jax, the Lumberjacks. But we will talk to them. And we'll be discussing it at the end of this meeting.
Might be a good public relations tool to run a contest. And you might get different suggestions. I fully support tying it into the history of our community in the logging operations.
And the guy didn't mean to be smart. He ran the history of Tupper Lake, and he came up with this, you know? And I never knew what a River Pig was. I didn't even know about it, actually, I mean. So I hear you.
I hope you'll prevail.
We'll look at it.
The conversation definitely has got started, I mean, within the.
Glad to know it's not a done deal. I didn't understand how the process had evolved. I didn't know that it had ever been discussed at a meeting or anything. So I'm glad to know that you'll be involved.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I'll give up my seat.
Oh, we've got a lot of people around. Any other questions from the press when we're here? Anybody else ready to minute? Okay. I want to remind everybody that the circus is on tonight. I'm going to skip down. I want the chief of police and the chief of the party department to come on next, the next making. Leave early. Chief, please.
We'll start with my monthly report for July 2019. You'll see I didn't put the mileage or the police cars on the top. It wasn't even a miscommunication. I just assumed the new fuel system down at the village garage had some kind of mileage printout because you have to put mileage in to get the pump to turn on the new system. Thought I went mike today. We weren't really sure what it did other than spit out a report that says how many times we gassed up. So we're going to look to see if we get the mileage printed on a report out that system. If not, next month's report will go back to the way I used to do it.
Okay.
Okay, that's the way that's going to be. Total reported incidents, 152. Total open doors, two. Three rescue call assists, one utility company call, three assists to New York State Police, seven accidents, two alarms. Still nothing on the property with our new RMS program value. One order of protection, one missing persons, one VNT complaint, one dog complaint. It's kind of light for July. But I will tell the board, if you look in your packet, some of the incidents, we've got hundreds of hours invested in some serious felony investigations that occurred during July. So much of that, the proactive stuff is light because they just didn't have time.
Chief, a question before I had some calls. I think we still, do we still check doors? Do our guys check doors every, all businesses? Okay.
May I ask you, accept that report?
It's a motion. Trustee Hollingsworth, second trustee Maroon. Discussion. All those in favor, opposed. Report is accepted.
Our annual touch of truck, we had scheduled it, then we moved it, and then at the last minute, Rock the Art scheduled their event. And I was asked if I would cooperate with them. I said yes. Then the new ball field kicked them out of the ball field, and they came down next to me, and it was going to be a problem, and I didn't. It was easier for us to move it to the fall, to that Sunday after just because it was turning into too much of a dis.
We'll be able to coordinate all the shit.
The only issue that you're going to have, I talked with Mary today, is the equipment comes on Friday. It's going to be around the pavilion. The issue is now you're going to be having fireworks where that equipment isn't going to be attended. We talked about putting orange fencing around it. Mark Sernell told me there's a bunch of orange fencing somewhere. I, we're going to try to wrap it up, but Bob and Bill are going to bring all their equipment down Sunday morning. We always brought it down before the weekend. So that's the only issue.
What's the date? Is it the 14th, Eric? It's the 14th issue.
It's being moved to Sunday the 15th, 14th?
15th.
That's Sunday, Sunday the 15th, from 11 to 2. We didn't do any advertising yet. Everybody that we had on board to do stuff with has been notified. It's not an issue to move it. So it's just easier. It won't be there.
Okay.
Today, we received notice that Jordan Nathan passed his sergeant's exam. You know, we appointed him provisionally pending passing. We talked to civil service. They asked you to permanently appoint Jordan as a sergeant.
Trustee Maroon, second trustee LeBlanc. Discussion. Congratulations. We already used provisionally a few months ago. So now he's permanent, back to civil service. Yes, sir, trustee LeBlanc.
Chief, does the, does Dog get promoted till, does Dog get promoted?
As soon as the new car gets ordered, he'll be promoted to a new vehicle.
Corporal?
Sure. If you want to, if you want to sew the stripes on him, I'd like to have at it.
No, I can do that. I can sew back in the day.
I'll even wait for him to grab his collar.
All those in favor, opposed. The ayes have it. Congratulations, murdered sergeant Jordan Nathan. Miscellaneous updates, chief.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Chief?
Nope, nothing.
No, nothing. Questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
And thank you. I'm heading out of town. So do you have any other questions now? No?
Be safe.
Chief, call.
Monthly July report, total calls, 17. Five in the village, five in the town, five in Santa Clara, two mutual aid. Types of calls, eight alarm activations, two trees wires down, three NVAs, two water rescue slash drawings, and two mutual aids. Average number at calls, members, 16. Total hours spent at calls, also 16.
A motion to accept the report. Trustee Maroon, second trustee Hollingsworth. Who's in favor, opposed? The ayes have it. Chief, anything?
I'd just like to say that I'm sorry for my absences the past couple of meetings. I know it was a big deal because I got blown up in the paper for it, and I'd like to just apologize for not being there.
And I want, on another note, the chief and one of his firefighters, Mark Sernell, were out at Santa Clara last Saturday, Royce? Last Saturday. Yep. And we had a, we had a turnout. The town supervisor was there with most of his, some of his board members. And the people up there know that we're working together to protect them and helping us out. So it was, you know, it could have been more people, but it was a good day.
It's a good turnout for Santa Clara.
Yep.
And we gained a member.
Yep. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And then, sir? No, sir. Thank you. Okay. Under community, let's see, let's go back up to number?
One.
Five. I need authorization to reappoint Thomas Arsenal to the Village of Tupper Lake Housing Authority Board of Directors for a five-year term. And I need appointment, permission to appoint Ms. Joanne Maroon to replace Stuart Deal as a resident board of director for a five-year term. The resident board is recommended by the residents on vote. Trustee LeBlanc, second trustee Hollingsworth. All those in favor, opposed. The ayes have it. I need a motion to approve the board minutes for July 17th and August 6th of 2019 respectfully. Trustee Maroon, second trustee Hollingsworth. You've all read them. Any additions, corrections, deletions? All those in favor, opposed. The ayes have it. And for everybody, just to remind you, the circus is here for two nights. Tonight, I believe, and tomorrow night. And Danny McCleone is riding a camel tonight after he leaves here.
Only the two home. I don't want to get on those single home camels. They're dangerous.
Okay. Under community development, I need a motion to authorize myself to execute a contract with Kealan Planning, Design and Landscape Architecture, PLLC, contingent upon the Department of State for the State of New York and our attorney's review for services relating to the planning for the village municipal park. Clear motion. Trustee Hollingsworth, second trustee LeBlanc. We've discussed this, and Melissa McManus has worked this out with them, and we're hopeful to get approval from DOS shortly to move this ahead. Further discussion? All those in favor, opposed. The ayes have it. Code enforcement, Peter?
Yes. Building permits issued last month were 14. Site inspections, 65. Phone complaints, 14. Certificates of compliance issued were two. Building code related, 54. Zoning issues, 26. Two dig requests. Office related, 39. And I issued five violations. And I dealt with two zombie issues, and I had two court cases last month.
Questions? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's all I have.
Motion to accept the report. Trustee Maroon, second trustee LeBlanc. Questions for Peter on the report? All those in favor, opposed. The ayes have it. Peter, miscellaneous update?
Let me check on here. I don't really have any. Mary drew that in, or just to see if I could.
Okay.
Again, as I said to Jim, for miscellaneous updates, I will contact both store owners, try and get a little bit corporate again to fix the lighting and the signs. So.
Okay.
Have you, you've already reached out to them?
Oh, yeah, they've ignored, yep.
Actually, Pete, obviously, I give him credit, lots of credit, actually.
Well, didn't they at one time turn the layers back upright?
They flipped them over, then they flipped them over again. You know what? They are determined not to do it right. And that's where I come from. Them people are determined to leave it looking like a dump.
Here's what's nice in our new draft code when it gets passed. Those signs are being phased out. Where they can keep them, but the lighting's got to go out on the inside. Walgreens didn't have to comply with the new code coming, but they did. They, they're putting boot neck lighting on their wall signs.
I think that these people who aren't fixing their signs, again, have a total disrespect for this community. And that's what I'm, I'm here sticking up for the community. I'm not here picking on anyone.
We agree.
No, I just want to let it, no, I just, you know, because sometimes people might not understand that.
Okay. Other questions for Peter? Okay, Peter, thank you. PDW, Bob?
Number one, we're going to.
We'll lay that aside. Dr. Trustee LeBlanc graciously said we'll wait till trustee LaScala is here.
Miscellaneous updates, working away on Deer Street. We're unscheduled. Blacktopper's supposed to be here second week of September for us. I've sent, I sent two trucks Monday and Tuesday to the town of Harrietstown to help Craig Donaldson out so I can get his help when it rolls around us. Just plugging away. We're getting fire.
Questions for Bob?
If you have any, Bob.
No problem.
There's still a little bit more to do, but it's coming.
Other questions for Bob? Thank you, Bob. Mark?
Time up.
Ready. Kevin, do you want to?
Start if you want to start first.
We have the update on the water meter.
Okay, yeah.
I don't have it.
No, no worries.
I don't, I'm not.
I'll put it, be quick.
Everybody knows Kevin's good with our water.
Oh, yeah. I'm practically a resident. So we met with North Country Contractors and who they're working with for the meter installation, Depot Metering. I don't know if you've heard of that name, but they gave a presentation to the mayor, Mary, Mark. I don't think Ron was there.
Gary.
Gary Graze. Yeah. So the short version is they have their letter ready to go out. They've got our spreadsheet, so they've been working with Mary on getting the data integration ready for working with her system. And they are supposed to be on the ground beginning the second week of September. So they've got, they're going to start calling. The residents sending out the letter to follow up. Their goal is to schedule two weeks in advance and then keep rolling. So they don't want to schedule too far out for fear that, you know, people will forget or whatever. We talked to them about their process, their literature that they're sending out. This is a sign that's going to be on their truck.
We'll get the press copies of this.
Yeah. And if you want, give me a card or something, an email address. I'll send it over to you. So just, I know there was.
I'll send it up in there.
There was concern that the village's number be on. So, you know, if they, people want to call the village.
Right.
And confirm. So that's on there. This is a copy of the door. I'll leave this here and send this around.
Yeah, copies after we get.
Okay, Mary, did I send that to you or no?
Uh, yes, yep.
Yeah, okay. We've got some language you just want to change. We're going to have the village's phone number to that as well. But it tells them they're supposed to call Vetbo to schedule things up. They use the word upgrade instead of installation. This isn't an upgrade project. This is real meters. And I guess most importantly, I know you're very concerned about the information of the letters that your public, your customers get. So Mary will share this with you as well. It's the letter that they will mail out. That's part of their, that's no extra money. That's part of what you're paying for already. And it's just, again, a letter saying, you know, we're going to be calling you. We're going to be here in a couple of weeks and set things up. So if you have any comments to that, please let me know by the end of the week so we can get it back to them. All right? They plan to have four or five crews going through any given day, and they figure each crew can cover about eight meters a day. So you're looking at roughly potentially 32 to 40 meters a day. That's a couple to 300 a week. They really plan to rally through the community, get this. We arranged Gary Graze will be making inspections as he can. He'll follow up with phone calls with others that he can't get to. But the good thing is there will be a website address, and the board members can be given that address as soon as we get it. All of this information is uploaded immediately. So there will be a schedule that will show you what people are going to be installed, where their, what properties are going to have installation over the next day, next couple of weeks. As soon as they install, they, they take a picture before and after to document the condition of the water pipe. Those photos are uploaded, uploaded. The serial number will go into the database so we can start linking it to the village system just to know which meters have been read and so forth. So you can get instant online access to see how they're progressing and how they're moving along. Okay, so that's good. I mean, this, if it works, they've done this in other communities. They swear they can get that any inserted in a day. So we're hoping that follows through for Tupper Lake.
Actually, that, to add on, that day after the meeting, the guy from, what is it?
Vivo.
The guy from Vivo and I and Roger went out. We actually went into my cellar at both houses. And we went into three or four other cellars, took pictures. Mark, you work with us. So they could see what their different looks like in the, in the community. And, you know, I mean, it's going to go as smooth as we can.
Did they actually install one there?
They didn't install one, no.
But.
They took pictures and, you know, they're no, a lot of different setups, you know, white setups.
Yeah. They, they maintain that they have good feedback on their customer service, you know, polite, cordial to not track dirt and everything in. So we're expecting really smooth transition. Mark's staff will be on alert so if a curb stop to shut off the water or something is needed or something breaks, they can follow through timely to try and get things packed up as, as soon as possible.
We will be down Church and Deer before that.
That was my next question, but before I get, but let me just, are you going to say more or you have more to say on this?
I have more to say, but go.
I just want to say for the press, this is a state order. We're going to make it as user friendly as possible. There's about 360 locations that have not sent back a letter.
How many there?
Approximately 360. I'm asking those people to either call the village office, send the letter in, call me. I'll get, I'll hand deliver the letter to you because we want to get this done in an orderly manner. And if anything happens, well, they're there. If a pipe breaks while they're changing it, we're going to take care of it. We're not saying it's, the whole house isn't guaranteed for the rest, rest of you not to write this down. I just want you to understand. The whole house isn't guaranteed for the rest of the world, but anything that happens while they're installing the meters, we take care of. We want to make it as smooth as possible. Can people, please call, call in, call me. We'll get you a letter. Bring it up to your house, have them sign it so we can get this rolling and, and get this accomplished in an orderly, orderly fashion. I've met with this company. They seem to be very good. They've done it in a lot of small communities like ours, and there's been very little issue.
They got good recommendations, so let's hope they follow suit.
Go ahead, Kevin.
No worries. To that issue, mayor, Mary informed me that she wanted to send one last letter to the 360 folks.
Right.
I drafted a letter. I.
I just saw it. I'm going to.
Yeah, you let me know.
Yeah. What we're going to done tomorrow or Friday?
That's fine. We'd like to, we're planning to be able to send them out Friday. I put a response date of like the 13th. And Vivo even said, yeah, I mean, obviously it behooves them to get this done fast, you know, more effective for them. So the more responses we get back, the easier they can to set up blocks, neighborhoods, or whatever, to do it one time as much as possible so they don't have to keep zipping.
And so we don't have to, if we have to shut water off, we don't come back, shut it off. Mark, that's right.
And Paul, the mailings are going to be targeted to certain areas. So if they're going to do the French Village around just the high school, just that area will get the first mailing.
Right.
If they're going to do Stetson Road, just that area will get the second mailing. So.
That's the Vivo mailing.
Yeah, the Vivo mailing. So I did want, once the letters start going out, I want everyone to expect a mailing. They're going to go out in phases.
Areas.
Yeah, phased areas.
Peter?
I have one question, and this may help some of your problems for people not turning in their info. I have a friend, his water, whatever, the home he inherited from his late grandmother, he said he got a letter and he didn't turn it in because it didn't have his name on it. And I told him, I said, you still need to turn it in.
I have him fixed.
You did? Okay. So I'm wondering how many people out there are living and just.
There have been a lot of small packs.
But they should still fill it in and turn it in regardless.
Correct.
Yeah, and I may bring up something also that, that I've been approached about. We have renters out there that are concerned that their landlord has or has not turned in this letter. So.
In that case, they can either call me, my number's there, or Mary, but I prefer call us because, you know, we're responsible for this. And we can let you know if we've heard from that property owner. I would have thought, I mean, I didn't tell the property owner to tell your renter in a couple of places. I know I had that conversation with him, but I.
Yeah, I guess that's a two-way street. I mean, really, the renter might not even, the letter might have gotten the property owner.
It did, yeah.
The landlord.
Yeah, we don't even go to the property.
Right, okay. And then another question was, that was brought up to me. Did we get the, get everything straightened out to the people who receive the letter that are on District Sewer but have well water? Because there was people like.
Like Simon, there was, there was.
Yeah.
Has that been straightened out?
We're, we're cross-checking those before we send those out. The ones that are at issue are the condos where initially we thought when there's going to be one meter, we have to resend them out. We're actually going to be putting in individual meters after all. So I put in the letter, I made it shorter, more to the point, but I also didn't want to, excuse my French, tick anybody off. So I put in here, please understand, some of you may be receiving this again because the village has determined the need for a different approach on your property. Okay? And I put down at the bottom, you know, please, we must hear from you. Call us. Stop in the village, whatever. So tried to make it a little more formal, a little more oomph, but also didn't want to tick off people and say, why am I getting another letter?
And I have one more question.
No, that's fine.
Have you been involved in another situation like ours in Tupper Lake where we put in the water system or, or maybe similar where we've, you've had to install water meters where that municipality has a flat rate for the water in this sewer?
No. No. That continues to be the challenge. But that's, you know, the village has stated, we're not, you know, you're not going to be raising or charging rates based on. But that's, you know, the, the village has stated, we're not, you know, you're not gonna be raising or charging rates based on, uh, meter usage.
No, on the village level, we, I would think that it's safe to say, we would not vote for that. I'm a, I'm a water user, I would never vote for that. Just didn't know if you had seen anything ever come up.
I've, I've seen flat rates, but to be honest, I know two communities that will now face the same challenge you have. Because there will be updates to their water withdrawal permit based on improvements they're making. They will now have to go back and go through the same thing, not to the extent that you have, but they're smaller districts, they're not village-wide systems.
Do you know if they were also subjected to the bait and switch, as we were?
The bait and switch.
We're, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, and it's because these dis, these were districts, town districts, that were formed a long time ago. Uh, so they've been operating without a meter, because it wasn't enforced, but it now will be when it changes now.
Other questions for Kevin, I mean, we're gonna try to.
Kevin, uh.
Go ahead.
I asked you this before, your crew, your, your installation guys come in, they find a shut-off valve that's faulty. Now, the homeowner wouldn't know that, because they don't know that until there's a problem. Land, we landlords know a lot of, so will they, what's the procedure, will they change it, will they talk to the homeowner, vote the need to change it?
They, they will talk to the homeowner about the need to change it, because technically, it, right now, from the meter in, is owned by the property owner. So technically, the village is not liable to change a faulty water shut-off inside the house.
Nor will Vepo.
Nor will Vepo.
To be made clear, they will not touch a private shut-off.
But they, but they will communicate, there's a problem here, because obviously Mark's gonna have to shut off at the, at the.
Curb stop.
At the curb stop, yeah. And, okay.
Yes, they said they were going to inform the homeowner that there was a problem that was not, that, that was, they have, they need, they need to get a plumber to fix it.
Right, so, but they won't change it if you gave them a hundred bucks or something?
No, because they're liable.
They, right, they don't get involved.
So do they initially turn off the main in the house and cut the pipe, and if there's an issue, or do you shut off every house at the curb?
No, they will shut off, the main shut off coming in, right.
So.
And if they have an issue, then we get called, shut the one off at the curb.
They're gonna try and do the shut-off first.
Right, but you won't know if the shut-off.
Working.
Well, they cut.
No, Vepo will call, if they can't do it, Vipo knows to call Mark, and Mark will send somebody out to shut off the curb stop.
Well, they're gonna shut it off.
Is there a way to shut the meter off, and, and, I mean, is your, or the monitor?
There's no valve on the monitor. So what, under what?
Listen, I'm saying, not turning off, not replacing your shut-off, is there, is there an option to shut off the monitor? There's.
I, I guess I don't understand your question, cuz the monitor's not in yet.
Hey, what's a monitor, the mon, monitor will be passed the shut-off, right?
Correct.
But there's not a device on that monitor to shut it off.
Correct. It's basically a passive device by, by the water flowing through, there's no, you know, battery that turns a turbine or anything like that. It's turned by the flow of the water through the system, so there's nothing to shut off on the meter. There's a battery for the digital code reader that sends the signal out, you know, for the reading.
It ain't gonna stop the water.
No, it's not gonna stop the water, and that's a ten-year battery.
Peter, uh, these are going, you got your water main shut off, I mean, and you get your own private one in your house?
Get in your house.
And the meter's going after that, or before the shut-off?
No, after.
Okay, well, I'm glad you told me that, I'm working on our house, and I got a lot of gap to put the meter in before the shut, but I have room. I've gotta make some corrections to my ground.
We looked at some very tight areas, and there may have to be some adjustments in some places, I mean. We went to, uh, Mr. Fletcher's, uh, junkyard. And in the back of that, it's, there's no room, I mean, it's behind a toilet, actually. And they had to, they gotta come up with a way to figure it out, I mean, there's gonna be some issues, but most of them are relatively simple to get at, you know, I mean. Any questions anymore?
No, I split late, worried about these, these shut-offs.
Dan, you know how to reach me, right?
What's your number, Dan?
Three one five, seven one four, five one eight one.
Dan wants a lot of property.
If I'm out, I get a message on my cellphone, so I can call you back.
Try to call you later at night, like around eleven thirty, twenty.
We normally get that call here.
See what response you get, Dan.
Absolutely. I'm asleep at nine, so you'd have to, you'd have to talk to my wife, I don't know.
Uh, you wanna, I've got a couple more things to cover, so, uh, yeah, so again, to recap, please get response back on this letter to me by Friday. We're planning to send it out. Please also get your response back on the Vipo package that Mary's gonna be sharing with you, cuz we need to get that back to Vipo, so they can correct that. I guess the other issue is, uh, to address the issue of disinfection byproducts still in the system. So, uh, the Mayor, Mary, Mark, and I met with, uh, District Engineer from the Department of Health, Marlene Martin. She understands the situation, you are improving, the numbers are coming down, your wells have been on supply now for, we're closing fourteen months. It's still not getting it down to where it needs to be, there still are violations. Mar, Marlene Martin warned that if it continues, likely, the EPA could issue another consent order. In other words, they're not so forgiving, I'm giving time to let this drop down. She even indicated that she might be forced to issue another administrative order, similar to your surface water treatment violation from years ago, that, that started this whole thing. So what we met and discussed with her options, uh, we are gonna need to look at, uh, possible alternatives to the system, see what we can do. The number one favored option would be what was looked at years ago, when you started this process. Which is another groundwater supply down in this area, in the southern part of the system. We tried to get a third well up at Pitchfork Pond when we put in the first two, in anticipation of extra demand, a, a problem with Lake Simon, Little Simon intake, whatever. They just couldn't find it on that property, so we had to go with what we could, to get you an eight-hundred gallon per minute permit for your system now.
And Kevin, another thing, the well, we were looking to shut the Tupper Lake filter plant off at that time.
Right.
We wanted that, to shut that plant off, which it did.
Right, DOH wanted that shut off, we agreed.
With our violation, our order.
Yeah, so that's been off for over fourteen months now.
The Matt is like, Matt.
Correct, correct, Tupper, right, right, that, that well project did do that.
Realizing the path, of course, we're gonna have to take, unfortunately, uh, you have to do what was done, uh, three times for your improvements before, which is. Before you can get any kind of funding for any improvements, you have to do what's called a preliminary engineering report. You have paid for these in the past and had them reimbursed. Uh, I was able to find you another grant source to fund seventy-five percent of the cost to get this study done. Uh, it's a USDA Rural Development, Pre-Development Planning Grant. So, uh, what I'm asking for, ask the board to consider, I need your approval. It needs to be documented for Rural Development, that you approve the Mayor and the Clerk and us, applying for a Pre-Development Planning Grant on your behalf. It would cover seventy-five percent of the, uh, it's a forty thousand dollar study, we have to do testing of the parameters, uh, in case. One option is the most viable, which is adding microfiltration. We don't wanna go there, but if we have to, then we have to have the testing parameters done for a basis of design. We're also looking at the intake, cuz if it's sitting, possibly corroded on the bottom of the pond, it could be contributing a lot of total organic carbons that are. Causing reactions with the chlorine, that could be causing the problem. Looking at a groundwater supply, and, uh, yes, we'll even consider a little bit more research on just doing something like aeration, if we can do that. But we have to identify alternatives, do a life cycle cost analysis, before either the state or the feds will give you, uh, grant and loan money to fix the problem. So first, uh, I would entertain a motion, or I would ask the Mayor to entertain a motion, to authorize a, a Pre-Development Planning Grant.
Is, is this putting forth that we're, we are saying that we are going forward with a forty thousand dollar study?
Yes. Of which thirty thousand is, is.
Yeah, I understand that, so it's ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, have we exhausted every possible option that?
Before we go there?
We should do it simultaneously, I think.
I'm sorry, I don't.
We, 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 we were told that we're gonna have to do this, because if this doesn't work, if we do aeration and it doesn't work, we need to, we need to have the plan in place. To, to move, because we could get written up tomorrow, actually, by EPA, and if we don't have a plan in place, we're, we're in big trouble. And I just wanna, before we take, talk about it more, the water from the wells is not the issue.
No.
The minute above, so we don't really have a, you know, we don't really have a choice, because we don't know if the, if there's enough water.
Yeah.
Down there to handle the whole village year-round, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that's why we keep Little Simon.
Correct.
And we, we, we've got to be ready in case this happens, Mark?
Correct, man, we, we've been operating it for a year, and like, we've got that throttle down up there, I mean, hardly, to hardly nothing. And we have to backwash it weekly, when we have a, the flow will choke off, you know, the plant will get dirty from the organic matter, all that raw water coming down. We have to backwash it weekly. And when we don't backwash it, you can, you can tell, like, that well will run around the pot and pump and pump and pump and pump, to feed the, the wells with water. And then we backwash, get that wa, get that plant clean again, then the well will throttle back down, you can tell by operating.
Have you done about the filtration plant at Moody?
No, it's a. Trustee of law.
You can tell, you can tell.
Mark, I thought we just spent thirty-five hundred dollars on that aeration.
We haven't done it yet, we haven't.
I thought you guys were doing it last week?
No, we haven't done it yet.
We're waiting for the owner to give us a written, he wants to draft a written agreement.
The lawyer's drafting a agreement, so we can get on the land and do it.
Has to be done by contract.
What does aeration, I know what aeration, but how does, how does it apply in this, in the, in the groundwater, in the surface water sense of Lake Simon?
The theory behind that, Dan, it'll pull a lot of that, the air will pull a lot of that organic matter out of the water. That way, it won't be there to come in contact with the chlorine.
It also helps to mix it more thoroughly, so you don't have a slug of chlorine that has to react with any one single zone or area of the organics. Because the more organics you have, the more the chlorine wants to react, will react with it. So when you increase organics and you increase the chlorine reacting with it, you're gonna increase your disinfection byproducts. So the theory is that the aeration more evenly distributes it, so you don't have a spike in concentration, and a spike in chlorine reacting with it, and a spike in DBPs. Aeration is, is thoroughly used in tanks, but you're getting your tank turnover much better, now that you've made all these other improvements. But you've still got a problem at the source, and there isn't a ton of research, we're digging up research, to try and see if aeration is a viable alternative right at your source.
Is there a way to, to replace a foot valve, or whatever's in Lake, Little Simon, is there, I mean, what, is the pipe just stuck in the middle of the lake, or?
Yeah, they've got it, you know, a few hundred feet out into, into the lake, in the pond.
On the lake bottom.
Well, at one time, they had a crib built to keep it up from the lake bottom. I mean, nineteen thirty-two, that got built, over time, that crib rotted away, which dropped the intake to the bottom.
On the surface.
Correct.
That crib needs to be rebuilt.
We do have a diver, Leon, coming to dive and take a look at that, and get a picture of that intake.
Is replacing the crib an option?
Right, the, the, by looking at it, the diver will know what you're looking at.
So you're gonna suck it from the bottom, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, what we'd like to do, and part of this, is to take some samples throughout the system, to see if we can see where the total organic carbons are really coming from. It's, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a mystery, there's a lot of variables in here to figure out exactly, is there a primary cause? Is it a bunch of little things that are creating the problem? I mean, we were, we were told, put in microfiltration, well, that's a million dollars, I can't in good faith say, do, spend a million dollars if I don't know that we're really hitting the source of the problem. So that's why the study is needed, to try and narrow down what that source of the problem is.
So is microfiltration just, it's just more thorough filtration?
Yeah, it's a smaller porosity size, so it supplements the diatomaceous earth, and it's like a more intense filtration. Just so you know, there's microfiltration, there's nanofiltration, and there's ultrafiltration. Simply put, just smaller holes as you go through, so that's one of the things we're gonna have to evaluate. If it looks like fil, extra filtration is needed, then we have to determine which level of filtration is the one that's gonna work the most.
But you would do that filtration in the filtration plant, right?
Correct.
You just upgrade the machinery there?
Correct, the equipment.
It's a small package unit, Starlight just put one in, so we have that to go look at, Marlene wants to go with us to take a look at it and understand how it's.
They put in a microfiltration system?
My understanding, yes, Dank worked with, uh, them to help fund and, and implement that, so that's been online. But what I don't know, Dan, I don't know the background of the problem for which they chose microfiltration, that's the other reason. Just because it worked for Starlight, doesn't mean they were having the exact same problems.
They used to get their water out of a pit of that's in mine, so it was kinda a little dirty there.
And the thing with that, Danny, they had to build a building, they had to build, you know, we've already got a building, you know, there.
Right.
You know, we've already got the chlorine there, we've already got the equipment there, I mean.
Kevin, I think what some.
Correct.
Go ahead, Dan.
You're just, you're just improving your filtration system.
Improve the technology, correct.
I think what some of the trustees are concerned about is, we're gonna have to expend some money for the study, and we may be able to cure it before the study gets done.
Right.
So I guess the question is.
I wanna go that direction, Mayor.
Do we have to, do we have to do the study now, or can we try the aeration first and see, that's what, I think that's what.
Well, there are funding times, there are funding times where you gotta be ready, you gotta be shelf-ready to go in for those funding sources. If you're not shelf-ready, then you're a whole nother year out to go.
Well, what's the deadline?
I don't know exactly, but a lot of it is coming up with Danny, right?
Well, I think if they're, it's happening, it's happening, it just hasn't been done yet.
They're having an agreement with, with the owner.
We're waiting for the agreement, they want to have their lawyer draft the agreement, so we're trying to get.
I think I oughta have our attorney, Nathan Race, get on it.
It's not Nathan, it's their attorney first.
Their attorney first?
They're drafting, they own the land, man.
I understand that, but.
And let me clarify, technically, we can't start or we can't bill until the preliminary, the Pre-Development Grant is approved from Rural Development. That takes a little bit of time, so all I'm really asking for is the approval to put in the application for the Pre-Development Grant.
We don't have to accept, I mean, if we've got a, if we got a solution before the grant, we wouldn't have to apply.
Can we withdraw?
Can we withdraw?
Yeah.
That's fine.
This is just to start the process.
Cause I pay for it, we're going. You don't have to write the check, tell them all.
You guys hear what we just said? What this is, is not to commit us to forty thousand dollars and seventy-five percent of that. This is to let a C two, oh, three, I was gonna say.
Kevin.
Kevin, to let Kevin put the application in, we do not have to accept.
Yeah, I do have a poll for the study, but you don't have to approve that tonight.
This is just to put the application, get the application started.
Ah, cool. Agree with that.
Okay, all right.
You're, you're, all of your, you're mentioning what I'm saying, David, you good? So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
The trustee will want, all those in favor, or further discussion, all those in favor, close, the eyes have it. Kevin, other items?
I think I'm done, Mayor.
God, you've already given me a heart attack, and all that kinda money.
Mark, do you have other things to, or, I know, dang this.
No, we got a lot, we got a lot going on there with the plant and the, and the byproduct issue, we gotta, we gotta cover it. Like Bobby mentioned, we continue to work on Church and Deer, we should be ready before the, you know, coming to blacktop, we should be in good shape, we're, we don't have much left. We really don't.
Are there any other questions for Mark? Questions for Mark? Okay, thank you, Mark. Bob, just one further question.
Can I have a one-minute break just to leave, to give Kevin some stuff, so we can leave?
Yeah. Bobby, the end of, either, you know the street I'm talking about? Bobby, the end of either, you know the street I'm talking about Prince or King? Where the Platt family has asked some questions about? We didn't do anything to that, we just restored the line to the exact same length it was exactly.
Just renewed the line exactly where it was. Same side pipe, everything. Stones were there, we put them back.
We've done nothing to affect the Platts prop, or Mar, Mrs. Platts' prop.
I don't believe so. We went right exactly where it was, same side pipe, everything.
Okay.
We dug the dirt out, put it over here, put the pipe in, put it right back.
Okay. Now that road, is that a private road down there? Is that their road?
Sewer lining road, isn't it?
I mean, cause trucks, I remember, used to ride on the, on that bridge, the line.
Years and years ago, we had blocked it off, I believe, off Folder, Blackmanese.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, a barrier.
Cause they drive from there and come out on, on the end of High Street.
Right. But I mean, we have a right-of-way, is that our right-of-way there, or?
We do have, yeah, we have a, a sewer lining, a pipe right-of-way, pipe right-of-way to there.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And that got, eh, that got put in nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and they did the, yeah, they did the plan.
Okay, I, I, she's called and I talked to you once, Bobby, but I'll get back to her.
Yeah, I, I mean, like you said.
We've done nothing different than.
Nothing different.
Okay.
I mean, before we, the, the grass was as tall, and obviously during now it's not.
Right.
We have to, we have to mow that, though. We, we usually mow that trail.
Mike, electricity?
Our, the board do formally ratify change order number three and four for the general contractor, Murnane, and to also authorize change order number one R for the plumbing contractor, Bern Brothers, for the municipal garage project as presented.
Trustee Hollingsworth, yeah. Trustee Maroon? Uh, was there a cost shifts?
Thousand dollars.
One, we did verbally before, I believe, I don't, I don't know if that's even here. I don't have any problem with that.
Budget?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, trustee Hollingsworth.
Go wait for her.
All those in favor? Or further discussion? What do you want me to wait for?
Mary?
I'm taking the no's.
Okay, okay. I was gonna do it for them.
Oh, no, no, Bobby, I don't want.
Trustee Hollingsworth.
All those in favor?
Make a motion.
All those, the ayes have it. Trustee Hollingsworth and trustee Maroon.
Undercard.
Okay.
This is your man, Chris Carter.
What they approved?
They approved it in your number one?
Number one, I elect.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Mike?
Uh, we also need authorization to replace, uh, the Ford Escape Hybrid that we have currently with a new three-quarter ton HD Chevy pickup. And, uh, to either trade the Ford Escape Hybrid or place it out for bid on Auctions International, whichever would yield the most, the best price.
This was planned?
Yes.
Okay, so it's. Trustee Hollingsworth, second?
What was the trade value on that?
We haven't done it yet.
Okay.
What year was it? What year you traded?
Fifteen?
Ten, I think it's a ten.
Ten.
Clay, you're okay with this?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I thought.
Clay made the motion, is there a second?
It's on its way out. They told us, uh, at inspection that you might get one more a year, so.
This is the hybrid you don't?
We can still sell it, although it's worth a little bit of money.
It's the hybrid?
Yep, the hybrid, uh, Ford Escape, full signing SUV.
Need a second, gentlemen, unless you don't wanna move it tonight.
Yeah.
Trustee Maroon, okay?
But what's the chances of us keeping that vehicle through?
It's been gone a year, you're very.
What's that?
Within a year, they said it probably won't pass inspection again due to the, uh, undercarriage, but.
I'm done, depending on what we get for it, I'm saying. On trade or whatever, we didn't get much money for it. Keeping it for transportation for, but it's no good.
You can't put it on the highway, you can't inspect it. And, and, and one year it'll be done. They said it won't pass inspection the next time we bring. We brought it this year, they said you'll probably get the year out of it, next year chances are it won't pass inspection. And that would be with, uh, Walt Kennedy. Those are inspections for our small vehicles. Or we, we would've kept it. And the, the back hatch, where the hatchback is, that's beginning to rot pretty well, and when that, when those hinges break.
I'm fine with it, Mike.
You're done.
Okay. All those in favor?
I wasn't meant for you, I meant for other village purposes.
No, I would keep it too, if there was a way. I, I would've kept it myself.
We could use it for, uh, for, uh.
We're gonna do the baseball tomorrow.
No, we could use it for code enforcement, I'll say.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think it'll be on the road much longer, and I wanted to do it before it was deemed junk.
Alright.
We'll maybe get a little more for it.
Okay, all those in favor?
No.
Close?
I wanna go to the village of Tupper Lake.
The ayes have it. Michael?
Uh, authorization for myself to attend the annual MUA conference in Fairport, New York on September tenth through thirteenth. And to be, uh, delegated as, uh, voting delegate for the village of Tupper Lake.
Trustee Maroon, second. Trustee Hollingsworth, we do this every year, it's supposed to be mentioned.
You need a chaparral, this is the annual.
The annual.
This is the big.
Yeah, I told you before, you can chaparral.
All those?
Cut the check.
All those in favor?
I have this one.
Oh, close, the ayes have it. Ms. Lee is?
Uh, we're still working on Lincoln Drive, we're almost done. We have, uh, pretty much all new poles set, the whole length of Lincoln Drive. Uh, we're upgrading the primary wire there. Uh, we still have a little work left to do, but it's close to completion. And I just wanna let the board know, and the mayor, that the village of Tupper Lake, my department is gonna be acquiring some LED streetlights. So, these are huge energy savings compared to the high-pressure sodium lights that we have now. I have all the statistics, if anybody's interested, on how much energy they save. Roughly seventy percent, uh, energy savings, plus they don't, uh, cost as much to maintain because they last longer, so the truck's not out there fixing them and they're not out every other month. I put one in in front of my house on the end of the main street on the way out of town, just to see what it looked like. I got one as a demo. I think they're great. They're like these lights out here on Park Street, so they're a white light. I have some coming in, and I'm just gonna start where I started and head back up Main Street this way. So, just a heads up for you guys, if you hear people calling and saying, what the heck's going on? It is a different-looking light, and people, you know, if you stare at it, it's bright, but if you stare at a high-pressure sodium light, it's bright too, so people just, you know.
Dark sky, dark sky.
They're, they're, dark sky, applying.
We proved that in, uh, beginning of the year, so that's new thing.
Okay.
And, and we figured it was what, seventeen-year lifespan?
Yeah.
What they're playing, our.
You pay, general fund pays for the streetlights in the community. It's over forty thousand dollars a year. Spent, just the light of inside the village.
Just a quick average, if you took, um, so roughly we have six hundred and fifty lights. If you took that at a estimated two hundred watts, it's like a hundred and twenty-eight thousand watts just to turn them on, then you keep them on for an eight-hour period. That's one thousand twenty-four kilowatt hours. And if you convert that, that's about how many kilowatt hours it takes to run an average house for a month in the summer. That's just, that's one night of streetlights. At the, at what they're at currently. And if you turn that into a LED, you're only, uh, thirty thousand seven hundred and twenty watts instead of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand per time they come on. And if you ran the LED, if you took the energy it took to run the streetlights on a high-pressure sodium for, uh, a month, you could run one house for nine to ten months on that same energy. If you did it with an LED, it would only be about three months. The energy that it would take to run the LEDs for the same amount of time. So it's about seventy percent savings in electricity, plus less maintenance. But I just wanted the board to know so that when people see them on the street and they start calling and asking, saying they look funny or they're too bright.
How many lights do you get, Mike?
Uh, right now, uh, we're gonna do this through the IEP program, which, uh, we used to direct some of that money towards businesses to replace some of the lighting in the businesses, and that was great, but the IEP said we could use it for street lighting. Right now I only have a dozen coming, cause I didn't wanna get too carried away. I wanted to see what they were gonna look like in a row, and maybe adjust it up or down. I definitely don't think we'll have to adjust it up. They're pretty cost-effective compared to even the lights that we have now in the rest of the village, in the town. So, I think it's gonna be a good thing. It'll take, uh, maybe a couple of years to have the whole thing done. We considered buying them all at once, but, uh, it was, it was quite a bit of money, and this way if we take it out of the IEP funds, uh, it really doesn't come out of our budget at all. That's money that's, uh, it's put into IEP fund off the bill anyway. So, and then instead, uh, the businesses, like say an individual business benefited off the lights going in their business. This way the entire community will benefit off the energy savings. In the middle of winter, when we get close to the allocation, if all these lights were done, we may be eight, nine, ten less days a year in the winter than we went over the allocation just because of the less energy we use in the streetlights, so.
That's great.
And that's it for me.
Questions for Michael?
How, Mike, how much streetlights do you envision eventually replacing, like three hundred?
Uh, the entire village and town would be the, uh, eventual, uh, process, but that's approximately six hundred and fifty. That, and that includes like security lights that people pay for, uh, mostly street lighting.
It's a major savings, it's a major savings financially and also, uh, energy-wise.
Twenty hours.
Light, you know, I think we should really hit on that, that, you know, we could be saving the village and all of our ratepayers as a whole from the less amount of wattage that we are using, and we may not go over these.
A lot of other communities are doing it and they're buying them all at once, and we looked at that, but with, uh, everything going on with the garage right now, I can just start it, and it really doesn't come out of our budget at all because it comes from the IEP fund, so we're just gonna do them a few at a time and see how it goes. Maybe down the road we'll invest, uh, some more of our budget towards a, a bigger number.
Lean on the village, turn up the thermostat, ain't built, seventy-five.
I'm sleeping with them. Other questions for Michael?
No, Mike, thanks a lot for the help down the park.
No problem.
And, uh, Mark, also.
And I know that the people with the ark, your, your guys were down there and you helped them, so everybody's, uh, happy the way things are rolling.
Yep, they'll be, they'll have their power.
Mary, didn't we have one more resolution on the community, Green Community or something?
No, Melissa asked us to hold off on it till she meets with Lee Kyler. Her and Lee and Akankowski from Serenac Lake are gonna meet.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Mary?
Uh, permission to pay the bills, uh, in the amount of nine hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred and five dollars and forty-eight cents for the month, and also to, uh, prove the abstracts for July.
Is there a motion? Trustee Hollingsworth, second. Trustee LeBlanc? Uh, this is further discussion. All those in favor? Close? The ayes have it.
We've had to position this there for you folks. Um, our auditors were here yesterday and Monday. Um, they're moving along on our AUD, uh, they're gonna come back. Unfortunately, one of the principals of the company, his, his daughter was fortunate, and unfortunately, his daughter due to have a child this week, and he wanted to be in Florida with her for that birth, and he is anticipated to come up maybe mid-September. So maybe by the end of September we'll have the AUD and the NIPR report all filed, and now.
But we'll say that, they said that things look very.
Things look very good, yep, so things went smooth for him, so. And then, the last item, uh, well, second to last item. I have, uh, I've been asked to put to, during the budget time, we talked about some equipment replacement, and, um, we, we'd like to proceed on approving that bond resolution. If you guys could approve a bond resolution for a hundred and seven thousand tonight for the loader and the air tank filler, our, uh, cascade system for the, for the fire department.
Trustee LeBlanc?
Make the motion.
Trustee Hollingsworth? And I just wanna add that, uh, the, uh, the new cascade system, we may have a group that are going to uh, donate the full value of that, so Mary said we could, if we issue the bond, we can pay that off.
If we issue the bond, then it's gotta be in the paper for twenty days, and then you can borrow the money. So in the next month, if that money materializes, then I only have to borrow the seventy, I, I won't need that thirty.
So we're working on it.
The thirty-seven thousand or whatever, so.
The enterprise, the, the top reporter is gonna donate that money to us, and. Well, you didn't know about it? I'm sorry, Aaron, I'm not the drinker. Uh, hey, in our mind you are. Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Close?
I'm just, I don't know what you're willing, but you think, uh, a little bit.
And the last item, I have, um, I have my deputy treasurer handles the water sewer and electric. Her family, one of her family members is getting married out in Vegas, and she's heading out there for ten days, and is not expected to return till the seventeenth, which is the day before our board meeting next month. So, a lot of our bills don't start, we don't get them from all of our vendors till like maybe the sixth, June the sixth and the eighth, she'll be gone. So a lot of those invoices need to be paid monthly, or we'll incur late fees. So, I'd like to move the board meeting a week if, out if you could. To the twenty-eighth, if you guys could.
So, uh, we don't normally do this, but because of this, if, if we don't, we, we're gonna have to pay some late fees.
Twenty-fifth.
Everybody's gonna get, it's, it'll be, instead of the eighteenth, it'll be the twenty-fifth. I know some board members are mad at me too. We don't wanna do this, but this is an exceptional case that.
Perfect, at least it's a notice now. That's perfect, at least there's a notice and it's beyond seventy-two hours.
I know. We're, we're, I told you, I'm worried about that, so. Trustee Hollingsworth, second. Trustee LeBlanc? And, uh, all those in favor? Close? The ayes have it.
I incorrectly said the twentieth, it's the twenty-fifth, but.
It's the twenty-fifth.
Wednesday, it's just wait, moving out one week.
She'll be back, and otherwise we'd have to pay late fees on a lot of things.
No, that's perfect, and I have no problem with that.
We don't need to sign anything tonight.
That, that, no, that's.
I gotta tell you my story. So, the town board meeting meets the second, uh, Thursday, and the village board meets the third, uh, Wednesday of the month, and it's always a week after, except for this month. August first was a Thursday. So I came tunneling down here, uh, last week, and I was having tears in my eyes because there was no board meeting, so.
We are here with the program. Anything else, anything else to call me for the board?
Dan, don't forget Sunday school, Sunday. I'll get me at Sunday school.
Sunday school?
I'll be there.
Okay.
Yeah?
No, Michael. Uh, Mark, can you in executive session?
Quick, 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 quick.
Oh, okay, uh, for personnel matter, are you ready for employment for personnel?
No, actually no.
Well, what's it about? I mean, I need to know something to go in executive session.
No, you don't, forget, forget it, we'll, we'll talk, we'll do it.
Okay. Any good jerks?
You could've took them aside.
I, I have to, I need to talk.